First item on the agenda is a special presentation. Karen Cranford, will you meet me up front here with any of your family or anybody else you would like to bring up?
The whole family. That's work family and blood family into care. I love.
All right, let's spread out so we get everybody in the picture. Karen, thank you for everything you have done for the city and for our beverage control commission. There's a lot that you've done since we started that store. It's been very successful. We owe all of you a debt of gratitude for what's been occurring in that store. Want to read a resolution. This is a resolution honoring Karen Cranford. Whereas Karen Cranford, a native of Minnesota and moved to North Carolina in 1994 and has been resided here for over 30 years. And whereas Ms. Cranford attended the University of Minnesota and graduated from Metropolitan State University with a bachelor's degree in accounting. And whereas Ms. Cranford began her career as sales associate for the Albemarle ABC Board on October the 28th, 1998, to work in the first ABC store in Albemarle. Ms. Cranford was promoted to assistant store manager and eventually the general manager in fall of 1999. And whereas Ms. Cranford has been an advocate in providing a great selection of product to be available to the public, which in turn created Albemarle ABC Store as a destination store, not only for bourbon lovers, but for all brands of spirituous liquor due to the selection of product and the barrel picks available to the public. And whereas Ms. Cranford has proudly made 4.4 million in after-profit distributions to the city of Albemarle in addition to 265,000 for the quarterly 5% law enforcement distribution to the city of Albemarle and the quarterly 7% alcohol education distribution of 304,000 to safe kids of Stanley County. And whereas Ms. Cranford is very proud of the theme that she has created to make the Albemarle ABC Board successful. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Albemarle expresses its deepest appreciation and gratitude to Karen Cranford for her continuous dedication to the Albemarle ABC Board. Council on entertaining a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Let me get out of the way and take a look at their staff. Karen, anything you would like to say?
I'm just so very proud of this. I appreciate it very much. It has been a lot of hard work, a lot of long hours. So I thank my family and I especially thank my staff. As there is no I in team, it takes all of us to make things work. So I appreciate all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I would just like to say that I've been at ABC Store 26 years with Karen ever since we started in Albemarle. No one thought it was possible to have an ABC Store, but Karen saw fit. When she moved here, never did she know she was destined to have an ABC Store in Albemarle. My thing with Karen, Albemarle ABC Store, which you all, which we all know it means alcohol beverage control. But with Karen, it started out as lowercase, A-B-C. With Karen, it grew as uppercase, which to her was awesome, better and constant. Concentrating on constant means she constantly grew that store to be what it is today. If you walk into Albemarle ABC Store, the first thing you would say is wow. That store reflects her. With her and the board that we have and her team, our store will continue to grow because of the new manager that's coming in. Catherine Efer. We will continue her legacy to make sure the Albemarle ABC Store is known worldwide and it will continue. We will hold up her legacy because that store meant everything to her and me. And we've been there 26 years and we will still shine in the Albemarle area. The Albemarle ABC Store will shine. Remember that. Thank you. Sylvia Gaines bows.
Yep.
Thank you.
You were endorsed before a few minutes. I just want to take an opportunity because when we first started, it was myself, Doc Kelly and Don Frey. And Sylvia walked in, we interviewed her, Karen walked in. And when Karen walked in, I knew immediately we had a good opportunity to hire somebody who was of good character. Karen, for 26 years, I haven't met anyone that can meet, greet and get alcohol in our store the way you have. God bless you. I wish you well and good luck. My name is Jeffrey Flake and I've been on the board for 26 years.
Move on number three, approval of minutes. Council will approve the minutes for October 7th, 2024 regular session, special session and closed session for consultant attorney, economic development, personnel and real estate.
Move approval, second.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We'll move on to our public hearings. First one, number 4A is 2403 is the annexation request for Morgan Hills Phase 3 property. Council always, just as a reminder, you first heard of this back when we looked at Phase 1 and Phase 2 and heard about the plans for Phase 3 that would be coming forward. Staff will come up and introduce and if you have any questions or of him, please do so.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers. Open this up real quick here. Just so we, everybody's on the same page, what we're talking about. Just so we're on the same page, what everybody's talking about here. This is the annexation plat down here, where I'm circling is the property that's being requested for annexation tonight. This right here, where you see the lots, this is Morgan Hills Phase 1. That is completed now. This over here is Morgan Hills Phase 2, which was annexed in about a year or so after this one. They're beginning work on that phase right now. So this would be Phase 3 down here. This is 77.24 acres, tax record 6462, just south of Marlbrook Drive and west of Oakhurst Road. Again, here's the aerial of that property. Starbinder of what I believe was once the farmer tract, very large, several hundred acre property out there. This amendment is, the applicant states that this amendment is reasonably necessary to the public health, safety and general welfare of the city of Albemarle because it places zoning on a piece of property that has been requested to be annexed into the city that will correspond with the current existing zoning and contribute with the tax base of the city. Further allowing the community to have more resources and help alleviate all needs of the community for public health, safety and general welfare by closing this annexation. Currently, the property is vacant. The proposed use is single-family units if the city approves an initial zoning of R10, which would be subsequent to this agenda item if approved. The permitted use in R10 would be around between 160 and about 260 single-family units in a cluster subdivision. Water's available on Marlbrook Drive and Oakhurst Road. Power's available from the city of Albemarle. Sewer's available from Phase 2 and runs through the western portion of the parcel. We did add that switch over of all flow from Morgan Hills should be sent to the new pump station with installation of Phase 3, as we believe was the agreement when the original phases were annexed. If the Public Utilities Director Jay Voiles is here, he can expand on that a little bit as well. Phase 3 would connect to Freeman View Drive, Marlbrook, Highway 52 and Morgan Road from Phase 1 and Phase 2 with connections to old Aquadale Road and/or Highway 52 also required prior to subdivision. Some future stubbats to adjacent properties may also be required. Fire Station 1 is approximately 2.8 miles away, seven minutes. Fire Station 2 is approximately 3.2 miles away or eight minutes. Topography's moderately sloping. Parcel is approximately half cleared and half wooded. And the majority is located, is not located in a regulated flood plain. Only a small portion of that on the far west side would be located in the flood plain. At present, it's projected approximately 165 units of single-family homes would be constructed. There would be just over half or just over one mile of new streets, which would yield a long-term annual tax revenue of approximately 4,200 per acre. This would put it in the top 4% of properties for revenues in the city and providing an annual net surplus in revenues to the city of 68,000 or approximately 21% of the total revenues generated from the development. We also included the fiscal impact assessment for this property there for you to view. Again, here's an aerial of the property. As you can see, it's mainly either farmland, fields and/or wooded at this time. Here's the current zoning. As you can see, everything in the city surrounding it is R10. In the county is a little bit of R20 and then RA. To the dark gray, this is the city property that surrounds the treatment plant. That is zoned HID heavy industrial. Adjacent land uses to the north, to the east are single-family homes. To the south and the west are undeveloped. Go far enough to the west there, we do have the treatment plant, but that's a good bit away from this property. The future land use classification on this is county primary and secondary growth area as shown in the tan below. These are areas identified in Stanley County Land Use Plan 2002, updated in 2022 for the 2040 plan for each of the eight cities and towns located within Stanley County where growth and development is encouraged over the next 10 years. And if you remember, the city adopted the county growth areas in its 2028 plan, which is the current plan that we're using. Staff's comments, the subject parcel is currently located in Stanley County and is split county zoning designations of RA and R20. Parcel totals 77 acres and is undeveloped. The applicant has requested this parcel be annexed into the city to extend services for residential development with an initial city zoning of R10. This is the third phase of the overall development. Phases 1 and 2, as mentioned, were previously annexed by city council and assigned an initial city zoning of R10. So effectively it's just extending that neighborhood into the rest of the property. We have the map. We also have the resolution for council's consideration tonight. For the ordinance for council's consideration tonight.
Kevin, I want to go back to your lift station. And if you need Jay to come up, ask him to please do so. But if, when of my understanding, when you was here before, and if I understand correctly, night, we will have to have the new lift station in order to do Phase 3. Does all of Phase 2 feed into an existing or will part of it go into Phase 3?
I would ask Jay about exactly what's feeding into that. I believe we were going to be able to get the first phase and part or some of the second phase included in that as well. But at some point, there would need to be a switch over.
Jay is not here tonight.
He's not here.
But I understand also the agreement is that they were going to construct it. Is that correct?
That was, that was what was agreed upon several years ago.
They would construct the lift station.
Correct.
Okay. Council, have any questions, staff?
Two things, just go ahead.
Okay, two questions. We talked about Fire Station 1 and Fire Station 2 having an average response time of seven to eight minutes. What is, I was just curious, what is the average for the national standard?
Councilmember Townsend, those are, those are drive times. Those aren't necessarily the response times. Those are Google drive times, so maybe a little bit less than that.
Okay.
Just to clarify, yeah.
Okay, and then if Phase 3 projected 165 units, I don't recall exactly how many total units comprise Phase 1 and 2.
I believe it's five, it was 500 and...
525?
490? I believe originally it was 525, but 490 is what actually got platted from those two.
Yeah, thank you. So two follow-ups. One was to the mayor's question about the lift station. So I hate, and I'm looking at the attorney when I ask this. Jay is not here. We believe that the lift station was on the developer.
For Phase 3.
For Phase 3.
Right.
But no one seems to have that right now in their hands.
Rachel with Chambers Engineering is here. Rachel, are you able to answer that question for us, please?
Hey, Rachel Carter with Chambers Engineering. I've been the engineer on Phase 1 and 2 and I'm here for Phase 3. We did meet with Jay before ever presenting this to planning and zoning. All of Phase 2 gravity is to Morgan Road, so none will feed into Phase 3. Phase 3 and if approved, Windsor Hills would feed into a new pump station and the developer is responsible for installing all new infrastructure to serve that development. So they will be paying for the lift station, the gravity, the force main, all the infrastructure for that development.
And Rachel, I hate to put you on the spot, but have you seen that in writing with the signature with it?
Uh, it's just standard. I mean, it would, it would be like the, you know, the gravity, they installed the gravity for Phase 2 and Phase 1 water lines. It's what they have to install to serve their homes.
Okay, so.
That would have to be into plans before they would be able to move forward. Is that correct, Ms. Robinson?
Yeah, a lot of times this is what we'll get into when it comes to civil design. Utilities has to approve all that stuff, so they would make sure that goes into plans at that time before they get signed off on.
Cause that, this, cause just follow-up, if you'll come back, Kevin. Thank you, Rachel. Follow-up is that this, the very first thing that we're doing is not the development itself, it's actually the annexation.
That's correct.
And you know, I'm still old school. I don't like talking about development until I get the annexation taken care of. So thank you. If you will bring up before us again the map that you had on there. And it's the map that talks about, oh, there you go. So, so that each of us up here, I've walked, I've walked Morgan Hills, so I'm, it's a big place, a real big place.
Could. It might be helpful for you right there.
So Marlbrook feeds right in, it deads in right now. Can you, have you got, yeah, you got an arrow. There you go.
This is Marlbrook right here.
Right.
It does, it does, it's a three-way intersection with Freeman View.
Right.
Correct.
It just sort of stops.
That's correct.
Right out there. The, what looks like it's dirt, you know, all of that. Is that already in Phase 2?
That is Phase 2 and that has been, that's been approved, so there.
Right. Is there more of Phase 2? I'm just trying to get a hold on this. Is there more than that of Phase 2?
Uh, Phase 2 is everything here. They've annexed this in in three different parts.
Right.
So this was, this was annexed in here afterwards. It's its own tax parcel right now. For that reason, so it's, I don't know the exact boundaries of it here. It doesn't go necessarily all the way to the property line. There's some slope here and some of this area will be left alone or won't be, won't have houses on it.
So where's 3 on that?
3 is right here. Now, that pops up on there, but it's this parcel right here.
So follow-up to that would be Phase 2, not yet developed, not yet deeded individually, is still that 1D. Is that correct? Or one parcel number?
Uh, correct.
And then Phase 3, is that what, 9867, 98?
Phase 2's tax parcel number is 139897. It was given a new one. Phase 3 still has the parent, the original parcel number of 6462. So originally, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, trying to remember back, 6462 was this entire large piece. There may have been two pieces, but it was, it was one or two properties originally and it was 200 something acres.
Right. So follow-up to that would be with Phase... No, hold on. I won't even ask that because I'm going against what I want to talk about. Since we're just talking about annexation, that's all I want at this point. Thank you.
Windsor Hills, Windsor Hills is the pre-existing neighborhood right here.
How many houses in there?
Uh, I think it's 40, 40 something. There's several, there's a few more lots that aren't developed, but I think it's 40, 45 or 50 lots total. How many?
Like a total of 58.
58, okay. Thank you.
It's an establishment. It's an older neighborhood.
It's Morgan Hills and Windsor. We're going to have several hundred houses in that one place.
That's correct, yep.
And Windsor Hills is, is an old established neighborhood.
I don't know if this is in order or not, but my understanding is we have right at 4,000 units that have been approved in the city right now. Is that right?
That's correct. Roundabout.
And, and, and we're asking for another 100, 200 or more. Is there, do we run the risk of having a whole bunch of developments that are a third or half filled?
Councilmember Bramlett, I think, I mean, it's very likely, it's very common that you will get developments approved and property annexed in and it won't, they, for whatever reason, they won't end up going all the way through with development on those. So while that 3,500 or 4,000, whatever it is now, is, is large, I don't think we're going to see all that being built overnight. We will see a lot, but I don't think we're going to see all that built overnight. A lot of these, if they hang around for several years, they will end up having to come back and be re-approved and they may change later on.
I, I don't know about, I'm having a lot of people hit me that we're getting a lot of developments with a whole bunch of houses just put together, crowded and that sort of thing. And I don't know if that, if that's good for us. I know I want, I want housing in the cities. I like what the county has done. So I'd prefer to have our, our housing and people living in the cities. But, but 4,000 units in a city that only has 16,000 people, that, that just seems out of whack to me for some reason or another.
And those are, those are, I mean, obviously we've got a lot of different types that are coming in. The cluster development is very common, but those, those housing units, those numbers do include apartments and some other things that have been, that have been brought in as well. So it's a, it's a mix. We do have some larger lots, not as many of them, but some larger lots subdivisions that were approved as well. So it'll be a mix of all of those.
Well, and I'll just, Mayor, if I may, I'll just add, you know, to Dr. Bramlett's point. You know, the, the concern that I have or the, what I hear constituents reaching out to me about is, do we have the infrastructure, you know, and, and, you know, when you think about 165 homes, if you, if you average four people per house, that's, that's about 660 residents. And do we have the police? Do we have the fire? Do we have the schools to support? I like Dr. Bramlett. I'm all about smart growth, but smart growth. We've got roughly 4,000 homes, sites approved. If two or three of those developers start moving dirt in the same couple of months, do we have enough, do we have schools to support it? Do we have enough fire? Do we have enough police? I know we have water, we have power. I get that. But at the end of the day, do we have the essentials we need to support this type of a...
And you know, the city manager wants to jump in on that, on how we handle all that. Typically, these houses are going to come on a little bit at a time. And we should be catching up with that in tax revenue every year so that we are able to hire and add on as needed.
That's what I was going to say to Bill's point, is that you kind of got to grow it along. As the growth comes, the revenue increases so that you can add. We know that over in that area somewhere, before too long, there's probably going to have another fire department. That's been talked about. So as that area grows, the tax, property tax revenue, sales tax revenue will grow enough to be sufficient to be able to support that.
And I think a key point of that, not to get too much off topic here, but the future land use plan that we're, we're working on right now, that's, we're, we're working with the fire department on that. We're going to bring them in very frequently on those discussions to discuss location of where those might be, where do we want to grow and trying to stay ahead of that in the future.
I hate to do this to you, but I, like Martha said, I don't like to put the cart before the horse. However, my biggest concern over there is the distance between homes. They're 15 feet. Is that going to translate into the 77 acres as well? Are we, are we too far? We're not far enough along with that.
So.
Let's, let's hold just a minute. I'm sorry. I'm concerned about that, Mayor. And, and one of the things that council has got to decide, and we've talked several times, as they're going through this land use plan, do you want to change that? Cause that is what we approved in the past and that is what's been approved for this, for this area. But I think if you're getting into how you're going to zone it, we need to hold after the annexation. I understand, but I, I just want to make it known that that's not acceptable for me in this neighborhood. Cause I live there and I hear the neighbors. I can look out my back door and see Morgan Hills. And that's not a big issue. I've walked that place for the last three or four weeks and even before that. So I just want to make that clear where I stand, whether I'm here or not. I just want to make that clear. And council, council will have this decision to make, how you want to zone it. If you, if you're annexing, you have the choice. Do you want to go with zoning, what zoning you want to use? Any other questions for Kevin? Not, and we'll move on to the other people that have signed up to speak.
On the annexation issue.
All right. First one I've got signed up to speak, and this is a public hearing, so I'll open it later to the floor. Kim Faulner, 555 Marlbrook Drive.
Good evening. I live in Windsor Hills and...
Ms. Faulner, will you speak a little bit closer, please?
I sure can. How's that?
Perfect.
Good. Like I said, I, I live in Windsor Hills. I've been before council three or four years ago when this development got started and was opposed because y'all opened or allowed our street, Marlbrook Drive, to be put into this development instead. For years, we've been out there 30 something years. Marlbrook Drive was the end of the road. It was heavily wooded. We could have never foreseen something like this would come up in our backyard. But, but it did. And, and that's why I came and spoke. So all that's done and over with. Now I want to tell you what, what it's like to live there. Over the last three years, we have endured fire, smoke from them clearing the land and burning the timber and stuff that they couldn't use. Dust clouds from no vegetation, no trees, no nothing but dirt and dust. Water runoff from berms and the street has no drainage in the street that comes into Marlbrook. It comes right through our yard now. Just, that's just poor drainage and poor planting. Loud construction equipment day in and day out. Sunday is the only day we get any peace in our neighborhood. Delivery trucks that have backed into our front yard. that have backed into our front yard, making deliveries over there using Marlbrook Drive instead of all the streets that come into the development. They come in Marlbrook because it's easier to get over there. They don't have to, um, get around all the cars and stuff that's sitting on the side of the road in this development. And we've had to go out there and make sure that trucks stay out of our front yard. And this is just completing, almost completing Phase One and fixing to go into Phase Two. It's gonna be more, and probably more than I could even imagine. We feel, and we, is me and my husband, that the developer has not been a good neighbor to our Windsor Hills neighborhood. Its employees speed up and down our streets. The construction and, and the construction areas are loaded with trash, and that blows into our neighborhood. There's litter everywhere. And then we have other concerns that back when this first got started, there was a traffic study that was done, and it revealed that it would be recommended for Morgan Road to have an extra lane of traffic that comes out where Morgan Road and fifty-two intersect to have a, a right lane turning and a left lane turning. And that hasn't happened. And the study also revealed that people leaving the Morgan Hills, on Morgan Hills Road coming out to Cobal Avenue, there should be an extra turn lane there to get onto Highway twenty-four, twenty-seven. So that hasn't happened either.
Ms. Faulner, I will give you about thirty seconds to wrap up. We're past the thirty-minute time limit.
Okay. I wasn't aware we had time limits. But anyway, that, that is still a concern. So as a taxpayer and a resident of Marlbrook, uh, Drive, we're asking city council to consider not moving forward with Phase Three until some of these issues can be looked at by city council and subsequent departments and be resolved or addressed. And, you know, we need to hold this developer accountable for stuff going on. There's a whole lot more than obviously I can say. So we also have some concerns about, they just mentioned the sewer. You know, we had our own sewer system. Sewer easement runs right by my house. And I just heard somebody mention something about the Windsor Hills sewer system. So obviously, that's gonna be a concern of ours, that that's gonna be changed. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Bernie Carver, three-six, three-two-three, Oakhurst Road.
Yes, I live at, at the dead end of Oakhurst Road. Wonder how far that coming up behind my, my house right there? And, yeah, if there gonna be any way to get into it.
Are you asking that as a question?
Yes, uh...
I don't know that I, Kevin, is there, we haven't seen any design yet, have we?
No, I just wanna know that, is that what annex all that in behind me?
Show him, show him on the map right there where you live, sir.
I live at very dead end of it. Yeah. And all that, there's a road because, well...
This, this is part of it. They're not gonna touch your property, but yeah, this is part of it.
Will, will we be, we won't have to be annexed in the city. Okay. Okay. Uh, well, I just wanna know, that's for, that's, I wanna know how far it's gonna come up to my house, you know?
If you wanted to be annexed, you would have to request it.
No, I do not want to be annexed. I'm not paying city and county taxes.
You got a good answer tonight.
That's a good answer.
That's the main thing I wanted to know.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I just, I know I was gonna regret it when they start building in the area or all that racket, because I'm still hearing from my house all the way over there. And, you know, and early in the morning, I get up in the morning, hear them banging and going on over there. And it's not easy to, you know, to rest. And, you know, like I say, on Sunday, about the only time you, you don't hear them.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Most in close public hearing.
Second. A most in close to public hearing by Councilmember Townsend. Second, by Councilmember Aldous. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Council, do you have the information you need to discuss further tonight, or what would you like to do?
I just have a question. Is the developer here, Kevin? Anybody on behalf of the developer? Rachel's here on behalf of the developer. Okay. Thank you.
Council, how you wish to proceed?
I would go ahead and make a motion. We approve ordinance twenty-four thirty-eight.
I have a motion by Councilmember Whitley to approve ordinance twenty-four...
Oh, three.
Oh, three.
I'm sorry.
Oh, three.
Oh, three.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Whitley.
Second.
Second, by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion?
Mayor, I, I just, I've got to say this. For years, I have been a proponent of strong development in our city. Of opening up houses, whatever we can do, make, make it bigger and that sort of thing. But I remember when I was in business in Concord, the Economic Development Director told me uh, at one time that his job was to provide a family support job for every new house that came in. And a lot of those new houses coming in over there were people working in Charlotte and so forth. But he said in order to make it right, that Cabarrus County needed a, a family support job to offset that. I can't see where we're gonna get family support jobs. I cannot imagine what these people are gonna be doing. Now, I know they're going to commute to Charlotte and all that sort of thing. But when we're talking of four thousand, it just doesn't make any sense to me. And, and I, I can tell you this. Unless something changes in my life, I'm gonna be more for better, stronger development than just numbers. I want good development in our city. And I, I just, with four thousand hanging, I just don't see this as a, as a step forward for us.
Further comment?
I just would remind folks that this is not the development, this is the, this, before us...
It's a package deal.
No, this is the annexation. This is the annexation to begin with. We don't, we can then make the decision on how we're going to zone it. So what we're talking about now is the annexation.
Further comment? All those in favor, raise your hand. Four-four? Those opposed? Four-three. Okay. It has been annexed, so now we will go into the zoning. Four-B, zoning map amendment twenty-four-ten, zoning map amendment request to rezone Morgan Hills Phase Three. And Kevin, would you start by telling the options at the end of your presentation of, of how they can zone, of what they can zone and what they can and can't do according to our current ordinances?
And before he starts that, Mayor, will he talk about when these current ordinances were passed into, to our ordinances? Because this sitting board, if I remember, this sitting board made those particular, that ordinance. And we've just updated those numbers of houses in that size acreage. If you can do that, I think that would set things, set some information as well.
Yeah, we have, um, we have, I believe, six different, um, residential zoning categories, which is, is a fair amount for a city our size. Um, we have the, um, R-four, which is a, a kind of neo-traditional, uh, very dense, uh, development. That's a conditional, uh, zoning. I think you guys saw one of those, um, a few months back. Uh, R-O and R-six, which are relatively the same thing, uh, with a few differences. Uh, one allows office, uh, but those allow for multifamily. Townhomes duplexes, very small lots. Um, R-eight, which is kind of a middle of the road, those are eight thousand minimum square foot lots. Does allow for townhomes as well. Uh, R-ten, which is really the predominant, um, zoning district, um, the city is zoned for. I don't even know, it's, it's probably fifty percent at least that's zoned R-ten. Um, and that's, um, there's been some small changes to that, but that's by and large, uh, remained the same as it has been, um, over the years. So that is our, our most, uh, common one. And we do have R- fifteen, um, that was really, uh, developed for the, um, for the, the east side of town, for the watershed area over there to address some of those. Um, R- fifteen also allows in, uh, mobile homes, uh, as well, since those are slightly larger lots. Um, that's the primary difference of that.
Explain cluster.
Um, so clustering, um, is your, you get the same number of lots that you, um, were able to have uh, under the regular zoning, but you can reduce the lot size by up to fifty percent. Um, the remainder of that land, um, any lot that is, uh, less than that, you have to take the remainder of that property and ask to go towards your open space. Uh, that's why you see most of these, uh, cluster subdivisions coming in with a lot of open space, a lot of amenities, uh, those types of things. That's the trade-off of, for doing the cluster, um, subdivision. That's done at the time of subdivision, though. It's really, it's a administrative thing, whether the, um, developer wants to go with that or a standard, uh, standard, um, subdivision.
So you're telling me council can adopt R-ten without cluster?
No. Cluster, cluster can be applied, in our ordinance right now, can be applied to any zoning district, um, for residential, um, properties. And if you'll remember, um, one of the big differences, um, what you see right now, I, I would clarify, when we first did Morgan Hills, it was one of the first subdivisions, major subdivisions that we, the city had seen. The cluster subdivision at the time was really wide open. Uh, it, it didn't really, um, it, it required, uh, open space, uh, to be made up for, for reductions, but it didn't put a cap on how much a lot could be reduced. Uh, we've got some, some lots that are like thirty-four-hundred square feet in there right now, because that's what the ordinance allowed. Uh, before Phase Two was done, we changed our ordinance to require that if you cluster, you cannot reduce by more than fifty percent. So the minimum lot size there will be five thousand. Most of those are over that. They're around six thousand or so. This would be similar to that, um, to that Phase Two. Um, they would not be the size that you see in, uh, Morgan Hills Phase One right now. Same thing on side setbacks. You can still get some very close lots, uh, but some of those do have setbacks that are like four feet, I think, or even a little bit less. In between the homes, it's only like eight feet. So, I mean, you would have to have a minimum of ten feet between right now. Probably, probably more than that ultimately, once it's done.
Yeah, I would...
The minimum right now...
That we could see more expanse between homes.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's frightening to me.
Yeah.
And if council did R- fifteen, how would cluster work?
Uh, it would be the same way. Um, they would be, you would not be able to have as many, uh, units there. I don't know how that would affect the development. You wouldn't have as many units. In theory, you could probably get close to what they want, but I'm not sure how with the size, that would affect it. Uh, fifty percent of those would be seventy-five-hundred minimum. Setbacks really, I think, setbacks aren't a whole lot more. I think you'd have six, m- minimum of six instead of five or ten to twelve. So...
So we're really not gaining anything?
Not a whole lot, really. If, if, if that's a concern, is the setbacks on those, then we ought to take a look at the cluster ordinance and probably, uh, you know, address how much can be reduced there. But keep in mind, right now, standard across the board, uh, in most of our districts, it's, you know, between eight and twelve-foot setbacks almost, almost across the board. So, um...
Just, just dovetailing on Councilmember Bramlett that we're gonna continue to see developers coming in. We're gonna continue to see land evaporate and housing coming in. I'd like, personally, I'd like to take a look at, at the clustering that you just mentioned and how that could play into not the number of houses, but the quality of what we would have for the people that are making those investments and not being one right on top of the other. I mean, i- if you don't know what it looks like, just go over to Morgan Hills and walk. I mean, it's, uh, not much more than, you know, trying to shoot a basketball at ten feet. And, uh, it's, 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 it's real close. But I think they're already getting started in, in, in number two already.
They are. And like I said, those lots will be, um, uh, mo- for the most part. Some of them, some of them in, in, um, Phase One are a little bit larger, um, but they're not the norm. Ones on the end of the cul-de-sac, the ones in the corners are larger lots. Uh, but most of them are less than five thousand square feet. Uh, like I said, some of them, I think, are like thirty-four-hundred, which is very small for a single-family lot.
Good lord.
And so this goes back a little bit about what I've mentioned a couple of times before, during this land use plan process.
Right.
We need to be looking at some R-twenty's. I think R-thirties and R-forties. I think we need to have more options. The council has more options to do. Kevin, can there be a development agreement in, in this consideration?
I think that's probably between, um, the developer and council. Uh, that's, they haven't requested one, so I don't, I don't know.
I'm a little disappointed that they're not here this evening to...
So council could delay any decision and see if they were in willing to enter into an agreement for some kind of a, some kind of a development agreement that changes the, how close the houses are together?
Uh, council can certainly delay the, um, their decision on this, if they want to. I defer to our attorney when it comes to their development agreement.
Because it's already been annexed, it needs a zoning classification. Um, so even if you come up with a classification tonight, and normally the developer would run with what they would get tonight, the development agreement normally precludes, um, annexation and zoning. If you remember in the past, we did a development agreement, annexation and rezoning in the same night, so it would be a little rare to do the development agreement on the back end. Because once you give them the zoning classification, that gives them the rights to whatever is included in that classification.
I really think that the timing of the, the committee that's just been established rewriting our plan, again, if we were a year into it, we would already be into that. We got off, we got started late. We would be, these are the questions, I think, that we would not be dealing with right now. So, but we are finding ourselves where we are, and we gotta do something.
Yeah.
But we've gotta give it some zoning. But more the, more the reason to get the plan updated that you're working on, Kevin. And I just am very glad we got that committee established because it's, we definitely are in need for that. I agree with the mayor that in the future, the writing of it, that we need to expand it. Because I too have been over there, and it is, they are very close.
Phase One.
Phase One. Phase Two has nothing out there yet.
How much larger did you say roughly the lots would be in Phase Three and Two after the ordinance change?
Seventy-five-hundred would be the minimum they could reduce to there.
So that's fifty percent more of the, fifty percent larger than what they could do before.
Oh, because they're small.
According to Rachel, most of the lots right now are proposed at ten thousand square feet, but that's not something we can guarantee at this point with zoning.
You said the minimum would be seventy-five-hundred.
In, in, um, in R- fifteen, if you did a cluster, the minimum would be seventy-five-hundred. I'm saying that, she said that right now, the ten thousand is the minimum that they're proposing in the R-ten. But as I mentioned, that's not, and they're doing that so they do not have to add as much open space, um, into the, uh, development. That's not something that I can guarantee at this time.
Right. Without development agreement, we can't require it.
Yeah. It, it, uh, development agreement is, is a possibility. Um, it, I, I'd want to be real careful about, you know, uh, trying to use that tool too much.
Just Bert.
I, I think, um, as I previously stated, normally the development agreement precludes the annex... I think, as I previously stated, normally the development agreement precludes the annexation request and the rezoning. We would bring all those three together tonight. So it's, it's going to be difficult to give them a zoning classification and then go back and say, well, we want to negotiate kind of after the fact of the approval. So I don't think that that is something that we can do now. Obviously, I heard Ms. Rachel say maybe 10,000 minimum, but obviously what Kevin said, that's not anything that we can guarantee at this time. So we can only go by what the ordinance requires and the zoning classifications that are available to us tonight.
Come on up, Rachel.
What, what were you asking for? What, what would you be looking for in a development, development agreement?
Size lots.
Size lots or separation?
Separation, yes, both.
So I will say the topography is the worst on phase three. There's several jurisdictional streams. There's the creek that runs past the waste water treatment plant, and we are limited by the TIA to 595 lots. Kevin already said we have, I think, 420 between, between phase one and two. The maximum we could have according to the TIA is 595 across all three phases. And I think right now we're looking at about 160, just because the land is tough. Because the land is so steep, it is hard to find area that we can take away from a lot, but then put it back into an improved open space area for the residents. So we have tried to extend the lots as much as possible, because we can't, we cannot put it back into a usable open space. It's, it's unusable open space. Will still meet any open space requirements, you know, if condition, or cluster or by right. But that's the reason for the larger lot size. And I think you'll see phase one, two was also a conditional use permit. It wasn't by right, which I wasn't here on the zoning on that, but phase two lots are a lot larger than phase one. And phase three is even larger because of the topography, so for what that's worth.
Do that one more time. I think that's, I think that's of importance, okay? Because all that anybody sees right now are the 250 or whatever houses there are in phase one.
And it's conditional use.
Right, conditional use this side.
Yeah.
Two is about this way. I mean, it's larger.
And even the developer, they specifically requested larger lots in phase two, because it was so difficult for the builders in phase one.
This is a.
Go ahead, now, let's see if there's anybody else.
Mayor, I don't think I need to go through too much of this, but just for the sake of the meeting and everything, I just wanted to give a quick summary on this again. This is vacant land and is surrounded by R ten. I think I've covered the rest of that already. Have requested R ten and the staff believes there are merits to this rezoning. And at its regularly scheduled meeting on October 3rd, planning and zoning board voted eight to zero to recommend council approval of the initial zoning. They also recommended a consistency statement, which is included here.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Move close to public hearing.
Motion by councilmember Alders, close to public hearing.
Second.
Second by councilmember Dry, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Counsel, looking for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, given the discussions that we've just had, I would be in favor of holding this for a little bit till we get more information with regard to what the builder can do with the clustering and with the, the footages.
But I think we've got to give it a zone tonight. That's the problem.
Ma'am, that's correct.
Isn't that right? We've got to.
Ma'am, that's correct.
We've got to give it, so what is the possibility? I see what you said, and I see that the planning and vote, planning and zoning says R ten. Okay, I see that.
Right.
If we wanted to go R fifteen, that in itself, it says the minimum lot would be 15,000. Is that not correct?
Minimum lot size outside of a cluster is 15,000 with that. It's 7,500 in a cluster and allows for, it does not allow for duplexes, it does allow for single family homes and manufactured homes. That's the main difference between the two.
But what are we gathering size wise? If you can do R ten cluster and R fifteen cluster, what's really going to be the difference?
It's like 2,500 square feet or whatever.
So you would get 2,500?
You would.
On 15, as I understand it.
But when you do cluster, you don't have to do the.
Yeah, but on cluster instead, well, on clusters, I understand it, it would be 7,500, because you have to do 50% of what it is. So we're still getting more. I mean, the, the lot size is still have to be larger in a 15, even at 50% in a cluster. Is that not correct, Kevin? He didn't understand.
The lot size still has to be 50%.
Right, but what I'm saying is in 15, it's 15,000 square foot.
On a standard.
On a standard. With a cluster, it's up 50% of that.
Right.
So we're still doing more, right, at 7,500 than we are right now.
Yes, sir.
Your honor, based on the October 3rd planning and zoning board unanimous vote of eight to nothing, if this thing is written right now at R ten, that basically, that's basically what's over there now in phase one, correct? R ten?
That's, R ten's what's over pretty much the whole area and, and most of the city.
But if this were to be approved, just like it's, so if this were to be approved, just like it's written here, the additional phase would look just like the first phase, correct?
No. No, there, there were some changes to the cluster ordinance that would be applied. Previously, that 50% was not there. You could reduce the lot size as far as you wanted to, and that was something we discovered when that first phase came in. We pulled up the ordinance, looked at it with the developer, and they were correct. There wasn't anything limiting the, limiting that. And then there was also some of the open space requirements were not really there, the active use amenities, those types of things. So we added all that in to the, to the ordinance at that time. So those are smaller, those are sub 50%. Some of them are 30, you know, 30, 34% of the, of the required size. These would have to be a minimum of 50% of the, of the required lot size.
Thank you. So basically, R ten, they're going to be 5,000, R fifteen, they're going to be 7,500.
But also what I heard from Rachel on behalf of the developer is, is that because of the topography of the land and of three, I mean, two we've already seen is different than one, and it won't be as much, and three is even harder to deal with. Is that right, is that Rachel? So, I mean, it's not going to be as, as jammed together on any condition at two nor three, but three is what's before us right now. I'm of the opinion that even though, I mean, I love, planning board said R ten, I would be okay with, I mean, not R fifteen, but.
I'm, I'm more comfortable with R fifteen. I mean, anything that we can do to create a little more space, I mean, Lord knows, you know, the fire department's 2.8 miles away, houses 15 feet apart that are wood and vinyl. I'm sorry, you can deduct what you want to there, but I, anything that would expand it, that, that to me is the most important thing that we can do for the safety of the people and the betterment of the housing here in Albemarle.
I'll entertain a motion.
And I would make that motion, your honor.
Motion by councilmember Dry to approve R fifteen, is that with the consistency statement?
Absolutely. And wasn't there another part of that statement as well? Reasonable is reasonable.
Yeah, that's under consistency statement.
Okay, yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, but second by councilmember Hall, further discussion?
So we, we modifying the developer's request from R ten to R fifteen?
Correct. Which should make no difference to them at all if they're planning on building ten.
If they're 10,000 and we reduce them to, we've reduced them in R fifteen by 5,000 square feet. So we'll have to add 5,000 square feet to their, 2,500 square feet to the active open space. That's what the ordinance says. So they will probably have less lots. I don't, I would have to go back and look, but they're, instead of being full size, they would be reduced in R fifteen.
I'm okay with less lots.
So, so just the question, what would happen if we somehow, if it didn't pass on the R fifteen, but the developer already went through the process, through the planning board and everything, would we have to come back at their request and take a vote on the R ten?
I think if it doesn't pass at 15, Britt's going to ask you if there's any other options tonight. She would like to have it on something tonight, my understanding.
It, it needs its own identification tonight, and I will say that planning board's recommendation is just that, it's just a suggestion. So council has the final authority, so long as there's been a public hearing as there is tonight, you do have the discretion in the zoning classification without having to send it back to planning board for additional review of the R fifteen.
So I, I think if I'm not mistaken, 160D gave some time periods on initial zoning. Is that, that's, isn't that correct?
I'm not familiar with that. It would be hard to have a property annex with the classification for kind of a uncertain amount of time.
Right, yeah, that's not, that's why we try to line them up like that.
All right, I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? All right, let me, let me see that again, I got it. All of, all of favor.
Get registered.
Of R fifteen, raise your hand. Okay, four, all opposed? Three, four, three. Okay.
Another, another comment would be if the developer comes back with a development plan and there's some issue that makes sense, we could always revisit the zone, right?
Say, say we wanted to. The developer could request a zoning amendment, yes.
And that, that point, we could, we can consider a development agreement.
If the developer wants to come back and request a rezoning, there could be a potential to entertain something at that time.
That's, I'm just, you know, trying to foresee if there was some issue we're not aware of, and, you know, they might, it might make sense to do that, so, okay.
So follow up to the attorney on that then. I mean, would that be in the, in the regards to a special use permit or, no, just a, just a, just a change?
Just a general rezoning. I'll have to take a look at the ordinance to see if there's any timeframe on when they can come back. I'm not sure if Kevin knows off the top of his head.
If they've, if they're changing the zoning for specific, they can come back, I believe, if it's a new zoning. You can't come back for the same zoning unless there's been a substantial change.
Okay.
So, if it were denied, if a rezoning was denied, they could not come back for the same zoning, for like a year or something like that in the, by statute, I believe.
Thank you. So, Mayor, just for clarification, we know that if we annexed it tonight, we had to give it a zoning. And we had members of council who did not support the largest one that we could put on it. I mean, what, and I just, I mean, we know legally, we heard Britt say we had to give it a zone, right, Britt? We had to do that tonight. And so we were, I, I thought we were being as lenient as we could be to my, to the folks that didn't support. I'm, I'm just, I guess I'm trying to figure out, if we heard the attorney say we had to give it a zoning, then what could we have done differently?
Except as it was presented, or do what we just done? I think there's.
If you couldn't agree on the zoning, what would, what would happen?
I mean.
Let's, let's, let's move on.
But I just, I guess I've got it.
Moving on to announced allegations. Six A fiscal year, 23, 24, audit report of Almarl business, this ABC system. Durham Lewis is going to make that report.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Durham Lewis. I represent Durham Lewis CPAs. We're the auditors for the Albemarle ABC Board. With your permission, I'd like to present the audit report for the year ended June 30th, 2024.
Yes, sir.
I would like to draw your attention to page one, the independent auditor's report, should be the report that's on letterhead. And for the record, I'd like to read the first paragraph into the record. We have audited the accompanying financial statements of Albemarle Board of Alcoholic Beverage Control, a component unit of the City of Albemarle, which comprised the statement of net position as of June 30th, 24 and 23, and the related statements of revenue, expenses and changes in net position, a statement of changes in cash flow for the years then ended, and the related notes to the financial statements. In our opinion, the accompanying financial statements present fairly, in all material respects, the financial position of the Albemarle Board of Alcoholic Beverage Control as of June 30th, 2024 and 23, and the respective changes in financial position and cash flows for the years then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in United States of America. That paragraph indicates that I was able to render an unqualified opinion on the financial statements, the highest quality opinion that an auditor can give, which means essentially I found the books and records to be in fine shape, and there were no departures from generally accepted accounting principles.
Thank you.
If we could move forward to page seven. Page seven is the statement of net position, which those of you in the business world would call that a balance sheet. In the government world, it's a statement of net position. It shows the assets, liabilities and net equity or net position of the board. As of June 30th, the board had 929,000 in cash, 714, 619 in inventory, plus prepaid for a total current assets of a million 655, 846. Current liabilities, which are bills that are due and payable within the next business cycle, were 315,497, and net position was 2,000,269,835. The following page is the statement of revenues, expenses and changes in net position, which in the business world, we would call that an income statement. It shows that gross sales for the year amounted to 5,915, which is an increase of 200,000 from the prior year. Taxes on gross sales were 1,374, which is all mandated by state statute. Cost of sales was 3,124, producing a net profit of 1,416,603. From that is deducted store expenses, warehouse, admin and depreciation, plus non-operating revenues, which is interest earned, gives us a change in net position before distribution or net profit of 611,462. The board distributed 23,851 to law enforcement, 33,391 for alcohol, education and rehabilitation programs, and 440,000 distribution to the city, leaving a net position of 2,000,269. The following statement is the statement of cash flows, which presents the cash received and cash spent by the board. And if we move forward into the notes to the financial statements, I'll draw your attention to page 13, which contains a schedule listing the property, plant and equipment owned by the board and the depreciation. At year end, the board owned fixed assets of a million 577,508, which is an increase of 184,251 from the prior year. From that, of course, depreciation is subtracted. If I could draw your attention to page 14, in the middle of the page, there's a caption, compliance with NC general statutes. No instances of non-compliance with NC general statute were noted during the completion of the audit. If you could turn to page 19, the bottom of page 19 contains a chart listing the distributions made by the ABC Board to the city since inception. 440,000 made in the current year. 4,327 made from inception to date over the last 26 years. The next page, page twenty, shows the computation of the alcohol education and law enforcement distributions, which are mandated by statute to be five and seven percent respectively, and the board made the required distributions during the year. Taxes payable at the end of the year was a hundred and nine thousand, five oh eight, which included sales tax, excise tax, county rehab tax and mixed beverage taxes. Following page, page twenty-one gives detail on the various taxes. Thirteen thousand, three eighty-six in county rehab taxes, ninety-six thousand, seven forty-four in mixed beverage taxes, excise tax of a hundred and twelve thousand, excuse me. Uh, excise tax. The following page, page twenty-two, middle of the page, uh, we have our working capital levels, which are mandated by state statute. The minimum working capital of the board is two hundred and ninety-two thousand, maximum is a million, nine oh three. The board's position was a million, three twenty-seven, four oh one. They've met the minimum amount of working capital and have made distributions, uh, in proper amounts so that they have not exceeded the maximum. If you'll turn ahead to page twenty-six, you'll see a schedule of store expenses, which lists by line item the various store expenses incurred by the board. The following page is administrative expenses, which again lists by line item, the administrative expenses. Page twenty-nine is detailed information on the various distributions made by the board during the year for law enforcement, alcohol education and profit distributions to the town. And that's reconciled by beginning payable, paid during the year and ending payable. And the final page is the schedule of budget to actual and the board operated within budget, uh, for the year, which is also mandated by state statute. Now, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to entertain any questions the board may have. Counsel?
I just would like to say that the four million dollars in twenty-six, in twenty-six years to the city, that's a lot of money. And I think that we've got to, to, uh, just to recognize that.
Thank you very much to all the employees and thank you to the board for what you've been doing. I think you're doing a great store and, uh, I think you've shown that year after year. Counsel, have any other questions or comments?
Keep it up. I just noticed on their breakage and shrinkage was zero. Nobody dropped a bottle over there all year. It's hard to believe.
Don't say that now. Look at Sylvia. Sylvia's shaking her head.
They only dropped the plastic ones.
Sylvia is shaking her head.
Thank you, Durham. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great job.
Thank you, sir.
Good job.
Good job, guys.
When he, when he comes up to the, um, to the mic, I'm thinking, it was just yesterday he did that last year. I know.
Okay, I've got a, uh, unannounced delegation, and I'll try not to butcher the name, Yoselina Himes. Three forty-five Anderson Road.
You did, you did well.
Talk about it, uh, city ordinance, ninety-two, one twenty-three.
Good evening, council members. Um, my name is Yoselina Himes. I currently reside at three, four, five Anderson Road. Um, about a year ago, I started building my own house, uh, located at one, two, six Lakeview Road within the city limits. Um, this is a single family home on an established neighborhood, not on a big developer backed by Chambers Engineering. Um, I'm almost done completing the house. Um, last week I reached out to the city and, um, asked for my CO. I was told that, uh, before I got the CO, I needed to pay a sidewalk fee. Um, I was told that the sidewalk fee would be in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. Um, I was a little confused, so I called the next day, spoke to, um, the zoning department and they explained that the sidewalk fee is part of a fund for future sidewalks. Um, I was a little taken aback because I am in an established neighborhood, um, an older neighborhood, neighborhood in the city where I don't believe sidewalks will ever be built. Um, in fact, the home to the left of me, um, their driveway eats right into my right away, and then the home to my right has been abandoned for six or seven years and is up on auction right now. So, the likelihood of a sidewalk ever being placed in front of my property is very slim, so, um, obviously I was a little, um, concerned with having to pay a fifteen hundred dollar fee for a sidewalk that I probably won't see in my lifetime. Um, because of such, I would ask the city to consider possibly amending the ordinance to include a subsection, um, that allows for existing developments, um, from being, from being exempt from establishing that, um, sidewalk, where a sidewalk is not feasible. Um, I have pictures of the property if anyone is curious to see what it looks like currently. Um, number two, another option that I would ask you consider is, since I have to pay into this sidewalk fund, I would ask that the city council, um, match that so that we can all contribute to that fund. Um, the last option, and the one that I would prefer, is that a one-time exemption be made for the property at one, two, six Lakeview Drive, so that I do not have to, uh, pay the sidewalk and, um, if twenty, twenty-five years down the road, a sidewalk is ever established, I, um, would be, um, in a position to pay that. Um, I have photos of the property if anyone is willing to view those.
Yes, ma'am, you can start them over here.
Sure.
They'll pass them around. I will tell you that this is a policy ordinance that council adopted many years ago, and it has been in effect many times for many different residents.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, it does apply to existing neighborhoods. We did adopt, uh, three years ago roughly, maybe a little more, where you didn't have to build the sidewalk. You could actually pay a reduced fee that would go into the sidewalk fund, and we would build sidewalks somewhere in the city based on where, you know, that amount of money was, enough was collected to build that amount of sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
City provides all labor and all that, and do, we do put cash with it when we need to. But it was designed to help the, the bill, the, uh, property owner to pay a little less, but still require a sidewalk on all these big developments, like we were talking about tonight.
Correct.
They will have to put sidewalks there.
Absolutely, I see.
So, it's, it's kind of hard to say, well, you're gonna build one for these houses, but you don't have to build one for this house. When you're changing the footprint of the house, it's when we make you, make you pay it. And so, council has had this request the times before, and I think I can pretty much tell you they're not gonna give you any, any kind of, uh, an exemption because we've not done it to anybody else. We can't set a precedent now, but all these other people have paid theirs.
What, what percentage is it of the cost in it?
It's actually based on the cost of, Mr. Robbins, move on up.
The way it works is, um, is we do, as the mayor said, we do require sidewalks on both sides of the street on all new development, um, over ten lots. Anything under ten lots or commercial, uh, you do have the option to either put the sidewalk in yourself, um, or to pay, um, into the sidewalk, uh, funds. Um, it is, what we do is, we use the, kind of the going rate. We contact the public works director, uh, about that. Uh, right now, it's probably gonna go up a little bit, but we're still using a twenty-five dollar, a linear foot rate. Um, and then we, we reduce, we take out driveways from that. We take out, if you've got a huge piece of property, you know, it's two hundred feet minimum, that's not being developed, we would take that out. We look at just the areas developed, take out the driveways, and then it's whatever the linear foot is times twenty-five, whatever the total is, we multiply that times seventy-five percent. So it's a twenty-five percent discounted rate, since you're not putting them in on the property yourself. And, and most, I would say probably ninety-five percent of all the new homes that we've had on existing lots have utilized the, the fee in lieu.
So is that fifteen hundred dollars, is, is that the reduced rate or was that?
Yes.
That's the, that's the reduced.
I, I, I don't know the case, but, um, it sounds like if, if that's the final number that she was giving, then it should be the reduced rate, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, let me just say this, and, and for those of you who have been on council or been familiar with this, I, I'm, I agree, uh, in this situation. I know that something has to be done if it's a new development. If we're putting a brand new neighborhood, it makes good sense in my mind that we put sidewalks and we have that developer put those sidewalks in. Uh, in my own neighborhood, we had the same topic come up probably about a year and a half ago, and it's a forty-plus, forty, fifty-plus year old neighborhood. We had somebody come before council that was building a new house and we gave them the opportunity to either pay the fee or put a sidewalk in. Well, it's kind of, in my mind, and I'm just gonna say as blunt as I can, the homeowner's in a kind of a catch twenty-two. Either they put a sidewalk in and it's a sidewalk to nowhere because to the, to the resident's point, it's most likely never gonna be completely, it's gonna, it's never gonna connect anywhere. So, I, I mean, me personally, I wish we could look at as a, as a city, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do this, uh, I get business districts, I understand that. I don't get the one-offs in a established neighborhood like she's talking about, making them pay an additional fifteen hundred dollars or put a sidewalk in. Either she's coming out fifteen hundred dollars or she has to put a sidewalk to nowhere in front of her house. I mean, she's gonna be giving people directions to her house, yep, I'm the only house in the neighborhood that has a sidewalk. I don't think that looks good aesthetically. I don't think, I just, I mean, I just don't think it makes good sense. I know that, I think we have some neighboring municipalities, um, and I will double check. I think we have neighboring municipalities in Cabarrus County that do require this, uh, ordinance in business districts, but not in residential, unless it's a new residential neighborhood. Again, I just don't, I, me personally, I'm just one of seven, I don't see the sense in requiring uh, a sidewalk to nowhere or excessively charging a new, a resident on a new construction home. I'm, I'll never see it, so.
And, and once again, I'm not backed by a big developer. This is just me.
So, just I would like to, I echo those comments, because I didn't, meaning when it, that might have been not eighteen months ago, it might have been longer than that over in Lafayette, okay? But I don't like the idea of a sidewalk to nowhere as well. Um, but we, we have got to, we can't make, in my opinion, we can't make exceptions right now. We've either gotta look at it and change it if we're gonna do that because we didn't make an exception then in that fifty-year-old neighborhood, and your neighborhood is about that age.
It's not the same, I mean, there's some-
You know, we just can't do that, okay? However, again, it goes back to what the committee that Kevin's got working right now. We need to look at a lot of different things, and that's something I think they can look at. Question I'd have on the sidebar is, and Kevin, this may not be a fair question, but if we've got the fund for sidewalks to nowhere, is that an escrow somewhere? Do we know, is, do we know how much money we got there in that?
Uh, we would have to, um, we would have to, um, get those numbers for, we have five different funds, there's five districts. They're broken down in districts so that while they may not go directly to your house, your funds are gonna be spent relatively close to your property.
Right.
Um, commercial, residential, what have you. Um, we set up with that, um, they, they vary. We've got one right now, uh, I'm working with the new engineer. We're trying to get some plans for a, a relatively long sidewalk utilizing the funds, and I think it's district four right now. Um, there's over a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars there. Uh, last time I looked, it will be going towards that. Um, others are just accruing, waiting until we can get enough to do, um, some more of those projects. Um, we have used them in, um, Park West, um, some small gaps there. Um, believe we used it over on, um, Leonard to connect some small gaps there. So we've got some smaller projects, but we're really trying to get some larger projects to spend these on. Um, to, to the thing about the, the, the old versus new, um, really, we were, I mean, there's, there's not a good answer. I understand completely where, you know, some of the council's coming from on it. Um, but at the same time, we're requiring, uh, new homes being built in these new subdivisions to put in sidewalks on both sides. Um, and really, it's, it's, it's more of an equitable thing to say that, okay, when a structure's built, if there's nothing there, then those would be installed at that time, and that's really why we went with that. But then also realizing that, you know, that the sidewalk to nowhere may not be wanted. The, you know, um, the fact that it wouldn't be right in front of your property right away, that's why the, um, we incentivized it with the seventy-five percent, uh, reduction.
Yeah. I, I get that, but the, the, the resident before us tonight, she challenged all the council to, that she would be willing to pay the fifteen hundred dollars if we would match it. And at the end of the day, even if we accepted that challenge, not one of us will walk out of that, out of this room feeling good about it. Because while I appreciate the fact that we do have this fund that's, you know, that, that builds sidewalks in other parts of town, it's of no benefit to her, and we pay enough, and in my mind, we pay enough in taxes. And again, I get, I get the new construction, I get the new neighborhoods when you're putting sidewalks in on both sides. I completely understand that. I completely understand business districts. I will never understand in a forty, fifty-year-old neighborhood making this lady, making anybody pay additional money for a sidewalk to nowhere or a sidewalk to be built somewhere on the other side of town that she's never gonna be able to use. I just don't see it.
And I, I don't think any of us would disagree with what you're saying. And, but, you know, it's sort of a catch twenty-two to some degree, and, uh...
Well, the mayor, the mayor, mayor protein brought up, we need to either look at the ordinance and potentially maybe make a change, or, I mean, that's an option.
Well, when, when your land use plan is meeting, and I think they have a public meeting coming up, uh... Oh, is it, is that the nineteenth, Kevin? I want to say it's-
David's saying, yes.
It's coming up on the nineteenth, and I, I mean, I, I do think some of these things are items that the steering committee could look at, um, but I would just caution that, uh, they're not gonna be able to get into a whole bunch of detailed ordinance items, um, on this as well. They may, you know, they may, there will be some goals that come out of this, and we can look at, um, ordinances, uh, changes afterwards, but, um, they're gonna be looking kind of at the, the broad, big, big picture stuff on that, so, just to keep, keep that in mind.
I share your concerns, Councilmember Aldrich. I remember the, those are the terms, phrases coming up. Sidewalks to nowhere, when the Honda dealership was adding on their used car parking lot. And that's when this whole issue surfaced probably about four or five years ago.
Yep.
So, yeah, it's definitely worth revisiting as a council.
Yes, it is. So, last question I would have, and I appreciate you bringing this up because I would ask Kevin, um, come on back up, because you brought up an interesting point the petitioner has, that you're about finished with your house, and you went in for a CO. So, just a question, why is it that it got to that point before you realized that? I mean, you were finished with, you had all these other, you went through the permitting and all that kind of thing. Why is it, and I, somebody needs to help me understand that.
Were you your own general contractor?
You are. Bless you.
So I, I under, I understand that, um, and, um, our staff does their best to tell everybody about this stuff. Uh, we have made some changes. There are supposed to be some disclaimers on the, um, the coordination form now. I'm not sure if you got an old one or a new one, but there's some disclaimers on there that make those statements and everything, so that's supposed, that's supposed to be a checklist item that's covered with everybody when they come through.
From whom?
From my department on a coordination form. When you come in to get your coordination form before you go to the county to get your building permits, that stuff's supposed to be covered. Um, you know, it's, I apologize if it wasn't, but that's something we've been working very hard to make sure that everybody knows that stuff ahead of time. There's several items that have to be gone over, uh, with them. Um, and, um, so.
So, so when did, so you said you went to get your CO and that's when you found out about it?
So, I, I guess, and when you made the comment, Kevin, that you might have gotten an old form or a new form.
I don't, I, I, I don't know when, I don't know when this was applied for or anything like that, and I don't even know, I'm not even sure exactly what the address is on this, and I haven't talked with my staff about it that are responsible for this either, so I really can't tell you.
I understand, because she, this was an add-on, this was, yeah, and I understand this is, but I guess that just, that brings up a red flag to me, because I, I mean, it's a, being your own general contractor, I commend you, but oh my goodness. And I guess that, that might have been the part of it too, but I guess I'm just concerned that it got done and that's when she found out about it, that.
When did, when did you start the process? Can't confirm that. I, I would, I would need to make sure of that.
Thanks. When? A year ago. So Kevin, will you do that? Will you check for her and just?
Yeah, I'm happy to look into it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's, yeah, I mean, we, we've run into this before where, where, you know, they have been told, and I'm not saying you may have been overlooked, we've run into this before where they have been told, and it does end up getting to the time for the CO and it's... where they have been told, and it does end up getting to the time for the CO, and it's, you know, this hasn't been taken care of yet, so, um, but I'll, I'll check with, uh, Charles on that. I'm sure he's probably the one that issued it, um, potentially Brad. I'll see what they, uh, what they say about it.
I, I, I'd appreciate that.
The issue would still be the same, but, you know, it's, you know, we do wanna make sure that you know about it.
Thank you, Ms. Jaimez. Uh, council will consider that as we're looking through the process of the land use plan. Thank you very much. But right now, we cannot, uh, issue a exemption of any kind. Thank you. Council, your monthly department reports are in your agenda. Questions, comments? Your municipal calendar is in your agenda.
Get a couple of things on that, on the minute, rip on the calendar. Um, I've got them somewhere, hang tight a minute. So, is it scheduled, Todd, the twelfth of November?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that probably needs to be added.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that, um...
Just for clarification, for the city council, what she's referring to is strategic planning meeting called special meeting of the city council, November twelfth. Exact time is to be determined, but that date is secure.
And that, that probably get EYDL?
Yes, ma'am, and it'll be a late afternoon, early evening meeting.
Okay, thank you so much. And do we already have a place for the twenty-sixth meeting of, of the cog that we are hosting?
I'll, I'll handle that. We were looking at, like...
Okay. I was gonna suggest that. Thank you.
Moving to consent agenda, consider a petition of annexation properties on Poplin's Grove Church Road. Councilmembers, this is to set a public hearing. On November the eighteenth.
So moved.
Second.
I've sewn that June seventeenth, it wasn't just a typo.
That's, it looks to me like they used an old form and didn't correct it, because remember this company, this group came before us and then canceled at the last minute, now they've rescheduled it. I think there's got two different dates in there, but it's November the eighteenth. Uh, motion by councilmember Hall, second by councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Unfinished business, consider approval of the road closures for the twenty-twenty-four Albemarle Christmas Parade. I think we left it with some questions last time, and, uh, I've heard nothing back, so, Mr. Clark, who's gonna handle that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. JT Cranford, as well as tonight, with the police department. JT, if you'll give us an update, please.
Good evening, uh, mayor and city council. There's some questions brought up about the consideration for the road closure, uh, for the twenty-twenty-four Christmas Parade. Uh, you should have a map in your agenda, uh, for this evening. We met with the risk safety coordinator with the city and other staff to discuss, uh, the planning of the Christmas parade and the add, and the lineup location. Um, the, the recommendation of the group, um, to get the, cut back on traffic issues and congestion around the YMCA Pavilion before and after the parade, uh, was to find another lineup location. Uh, that lineup location was selected for the Stanley County Commons, uh, with agreements with the county commissioner, I'm sorry, county manager. And, uh, we're, the plan was to line up the parade floats, uh, that are driving in the parade at that location. Uh, police will escort them from that location through to the start of the parade, which is at the YMCA Pavilion, uh, there on First Street. Where we will pick up the walking groups, uh, the bands, any other kind of walking gymnastics or whatever's gonna be walking in the parade will be staged at the YMCA Pavilion. We'll continue down the parade route back to the end, uh, where the walking groups will exit the lineup, and police will then escort the parade from that location back to the Commons.
So, you're not showing now, so you're not gonna go close, closing First Street from Salisbury to Queen B. Mall Commons?
It will be police escorted from the Commons through.
Same thing on Second Street.
Same thing on Second Street, yes. There will be an officer at both locations at both intersections.
So, what scares me is that police escort, you think, I mean, let's just be real, there might be fifty, I don't know, fifty non-walking entries. And you've got, from the start up, they'll basically all get, they'll all get on the floats and that kind of thing at the Commons, and I can see that escort, 'cause you're just gonna get them up to in front of the YMCA at the corner, and then everybody will mesh in. I can see that.
Right.
That's not gonna be a problem. But what I see is a cluster coming back out of there when you've got three floats marching, 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 three cars, people, 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 and you've got police escorts getting back. Is that not gonna be a, a use of a lot of... I, I don't understand the, how with number of police officers and the number of police officers that are already gonna be at different intersections holding back people, how we're gonna have the manpower to do all of that back to, and I don't understand that logistically, but it just seems like to me that's a lot.
So, normally, like, for instance, last year, the lead car in the parade, uh, once the parade came back through and got to the YMCA Pavilion, the lead car did depart from the parade. Um, this year, that lead car will lead the escort to Salisbury and Second. We can exit the walking groups back off, out of the line, and then it will be in turn taken to Stanley Commons.
All right, where are the riders for these floats gonna get on the floats at? At the Commons, or once you come down near the YMCA?
At the Commons.
All right, so then they gotta go back up to the Commons up Second Street?
Correct.
And you're not gonna have the streets closed for that?
If I look at the street with, I was speaking with Joy, I believe the street closure's for temporary for that area. I could be incorrect.
So, you're gonna temporarily close them?
Temporarily close until we get the, the float back.
So, you're gonna have officers closing streets where they're going in?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so last time wasn't gonna close Second Street at all?
Okay. There will be an officer there at Second and Salisbury and Second and First to let the parade escort into the lineup, into the area, uh, pass First and Salisbury. There will be another officer at the Second and Salisbury when we get ready to leave that area, to, we escort them back to the, uh, Commons.
What you're gonna have between Second Salisbury and the Commons?
Another officer there if we need one there at Yakon Street.
Why are we making the change?
Uh, we have a lot of traffic congestion, uh, last year. Every year in the last three years, we've increased the number of floats for the parade. I believe last year it was just over a hundred and, a hundred and two, a hundred and three floats.
Not, not floats, entries. There's, yeah, three floats, a hundred and three, yeah.
A hundred and two or so entries into the parade. Uh, there was also five professional floats last year. Um, this will allow for more space for the lineup location. It will also cut back on any kind of congestion, confusion, or anything at the start of the parade and at the finishing of the parade.
Have we had those issues previously?
When it was fifty to sixty-five entrance? No. Um, as the entries have grown, those issues have been more prevalent.
Council, what's your wishes?
Well, so, Mayor, I got a question. So, so the parade's gonna end where it normally does right there in front of the funeral home, is that right?
Correct. This will also allow for further expansion, should we get more entrance next year and the year after.
And so, are the, as the, as the participants get off the float, are they just gonna walk back to the Commons? Is that...
Only the walking groups will get out of the procession at that time.
Now, a, as I understand it, Bill, everybody that started from the Commons.
Will go back.
Will go back to the Commons on whatever vehicle that they are on. And that was my concern, that's, this is the way it's been proposed the other time it was brought. But my concern is, is how are we gonna get from the corner of the funeral home all the way back to the Commons if it's police, if it says police escort? How are we gonna get it? Because it's not all, I mean, we, they won't all be together, because they'll be ride, 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 walk, walk, ride. I mean, they'll just, it'll all be broken up. I just, I don't understand how that's gonna happen with manpower.
Well, I just think about the, I think about the safety aspect of it when you've got these floats with, uh, you know, they're, I think, I think riding through a parade is, is one thing, especially when you have smaller kids, but when you're coming down the hill on Second, heading back to the Commons, I just don't want there to be any kind of a safety issue.
It will be a slow-moving escort from there up to the Commons with traffic cultures around the area.
Make it work.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the road closures.
Second. Motion by councilmember Whitley, second by councilmember Dry to approve the Christmas Parade Route and Road closures. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Mr. Clark, would you like to introduce our police chief?
Yes, Mayor, I would appreciate that opportunity. I'll, I'll ask Penny Dunn, our interim police chief, to come forward, just to be recognized tonight. Penny, thank you. Appreciate you being here tonight. Just, uh, I'll read just a little bit of background on Penny. She started her law enforcement career in nineteen eighty-six with Friendswood Texas Police Department. She moved to San Marcos Texas Police Department in nineteen eighty-nine, graduated from Texas State University, and after spending thirty-one years in Texas law enforcement, she moved to Davidson, North Carolina in July of twenty-seventeen to become chief of police. Her experience in law enforcement work includes, uh, several areas, including being assistant chief of police, administration division. She was commander in three or four divisions of the department, spent time in the criminal investigation division, the day shift and specialized unit command, and the night shift, and K-9 unit command. She was a sergeant in patrol and criminal investigations divisions, a detective in CID and narcotics, um, and also a two-year assignment to the DEA Austin Federal Task Force. And as everyone else, she started as patrol officer. So, those are just, uh, some of her career highlights. Um, Penny, anything that you'd like to add?
Uh, no, sir, I'm just glad to be here. I'm looking forward to working with everyone, and I've started meeting some of the, uh, folks, nearly all of them so far, at the Almar, uh, excuse me, Albemarle Police Department, and it looks like you have a fine group of people, and I think we can do a lot together.
Penny, thank you very much. We appreciate you stepping in here with short notice. Council, any comments for Penny?
Welcome, welcome.
Welcome.
I'll just comment, Mayor and council, we are starting the recruitment process for permanent position, uh, this week, and Penny has publicly stated that she is not a candidate.
Ready to retire.
Penny, thank you, I appreciate your help.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else come before council?
Yes.
Anyone else have anything to come before council? I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn to our next regular scheduled meeting on Monday, November the fifth at six-thirty.
Fourth, November fourth.
Fourth?
Yes.
Okay, November fourth at six-thirty PM.
So moved.
Motion by councilmember Dry.
Sorry.
Second by councilmember Whitley, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?